I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the very power from which it stands, one nation, united in the common. In the end of this long, but we can repeat it just for a little.
Victor, would you leave some prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we come before you today and we thank you for this beautiful time that you allowed us to come together. As a quorum, as a city, as its citizens. God, we thank you for the things you're doing in the city of Montavista, in Alamosa, and in the entire valley. We ask that you will guide us and help us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Nita, roll call, please.
Counselor Howard.
There's.
Counselor Lorenz.
There.
Counselor Watson.
There.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The foreman is the player.
Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting from May second, twenty twenty four, and review and approval of accounts payable. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. For the minutes of regular meeting from May second, twenty twenty four, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion for is to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we will move to citizen comments and special presentations. Citizen comments, City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit them to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Margot, it's your turn.
God, I feel like I'm an alien here.
We've missed you, Margot.
I have missed not being here. I so enjoy coming to these and glad to see everybody happy and healthy and well. And hopefully, dear Lord, everything's gonna work again. But I just wanna say, Rob, I just wanna tell you thank you for you and your people, how well they're doing. I know you've been struggling this summer and things look beautiful. So, thank you. And only problem is the, the, let's see, storm drain by full and winder is, um. It's gotta be flood because every time it rains, it's, there's different problems. Just to let you know, the whole street was rather flooded the other day when we had that.
Unfortunately, Margot, though, the storm drain there, full and wider, is simply a French drain.
Oh.
On the highway, it drains, you know, the drain inside the park as far as it goes and then it just.
Oh, well, no wonder it floods. Okay, but I wanna thank you for clearing mine. Everything works perfect. So, I'm a happy camper. It's a beautiful town. People are friendly. And I love living here and I'm glad to be back. Thank you.
Margot, you mark. Anybody else? Okay, we will move to scheduled appearances. Scheduled appearances, in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to follow the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Charles. Turn to sir.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name's Charles Tarnitzer. I live at two fifty four Franklin. I'm here to. Visit with you and I have a couple of questions regarding the closure of. Permanent closure of Franklin Street at Highway one sixty. Thank you, Mrs. Vance, for some copies of some minutes. I'm gonna reference the, uh. April. Four meeting minutes where. Was indicated that, uh. Mister Vance had had some discussions and they want the council to come forward and make a motion to allow him. Public notice to have a public hearing on May sex, May second regarding the closure of Franklin. Well, Mister Becker, I need your help. What's the difference between a. Public hearing that he requested and the public meeting that we had?
The public meeting would be for the community to come together and talk about it and the public hearing would be to.
It's where a testimony is taken and. Uh, there's a decision, legal decision made about it after testimony only.
A legal decision.
Whether to open or close it.
One's a pretty informal thing, the other's pretty formal. You know.
This one, Mister Mayor, involves quite a bit of money, I believe, quite a bit of Benjamins. Um. I don't know if you call it rent or a contract that you have with the railroad to pay for the use of their dirt. So I thought. That's fairly legal if you're gonna cancel those contracts. Also, on that day, Mister Vance said that it's gonna put it on Facebook, notice to the public. In the newspaper, on the website, letters to the affected. Residents and on the radio station. And that his hopes was we would have a. Ordinance available in a, in a couple of meetings. Mister Becker, what's the difference between a ordinance and a resolution?
Jean, would you answer that question, please?
Well, an ordinance generally is a act of the council that is permanent, carries law, it's enacted into the. Code, uh, street closures are not normally subject to that. Uh, it's usually an act of the council. And this one was taken, as I recall, after testimony in which it was. Um, the, the hearing that was held was advertised and. I believe you weren't there at the hearing. You came in last week.
No, it's not calling a hearing, okay?
I'm calling it a hearing.
It's a meeting. That was the first question, not a hearing, it was a meeting.
Well, I think that, uh, wasn't it advertised as a hearing?
Public meeting. It was a public meeting.
Public meeting, okay.
So regardless of whether it was a public hearing or a public meeting. The council acted on it after they had community input and the meeting was advertised. Thank you. She also helped me with that letter. That was supposed to go to all affected residents. Mister Watson, have you seen that letter?
Oh, I'm not an affected resident, but I have not seen it, no.
Mister Howard, have you seen that letter?
Yes, I've seen it.
I've included it in my packet, right? Mister Becker, you've seen that letter?
Seen it in the packet.
Yeah, I saw the one in the packet.
Why don't you cut to the chase? Are you for or against the closure of Franklin?
Oh, no. I told you that the last time I was here, I'm all in favor. I'd like to close all those railroad crossings that. Are not safe for our kids to go across, especially from the elementary school, which is right across the street from my house at the skate park. I live on that dirt. The entire skate park is where I live. I'm very much in favor of closing it, but we need to do it safely. In this letter, it says we're gonna hold a meeting. And consider the closure of the railroad crossings. Sincerely, Robert Vance, dated May second. Dear property owner. Thank you, Mrs. Vance. She provided me with a list. Of the affected residents. She took their names off there to protect their. Identities. You have a copy of that list in your packet. Residents that own property. Mister Howard.
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that the Wyndham Hotel owns property that could be affected by closure?
Uh, well, they're in, probably within a distance, but would they be affected by that? I mean, they're on the other side of the highway. Um, I would suspect that the traffic that they get, seldom transit sprinkled around the other few roads. I would not think that the, uh, the new Baymont Hotel would be affected personally, no.
Mister Watson. Do you believe that the Marsh Elementary School, part of the Montavista School district, owns property? That could be affected by the closure of Franklin?
Yes, quite possible.
Mister Lorenz, do you believe?
Actually, I'm here to hear your testimony. You, you signed up for a presentation. So if you have something to present, please do. Stop beating around the bush and say what you wanna say.
I believe that the Cornerstone Christian Church located at two hundred Franklin could be an affected. Property owner and should have been on that list to get a letter, as well as the other two property owners. Mister Becker, thank you for the see something, say something that you close every meeting with. They tagged that skate park pretty bad with some yellow spray paint, very bad. I pick up the trash all around. On that dirt road every day, saw that it's been desecrated, um, damaged, destroyed. And in doing so, I walked down that railroad tracks and there's a. Spray can in the middle of the tracks near Franklin. It's kinda got a yellow top on it. It's. Yellow letters on there. I saw that. I wanna let you know and I did send an email to Officer. Marmen and let her know that there could be a piece of evidence on the tracks. Thank you for the few minutes, gentlemen.
Thank you, Charles. Danny Robin, dark skies. This one baffled me because when it's dark, it's dark.
So tired, everyone. My name's Danny Robin. I'm the Community Outreach Manager for San Luis Valley Great Outdoors, otherwise known as SLB Go. And we're a nonprofit in the San Luis Valley and we're currently spearheading a dark sky initiative across. South central Colorado, um, in an effort to preserve our night skies, maintain our rural quality of life. Um, be able to protect our wildlife and natural environment. And improve public health and safety in our region. So I'm here today to present about this initiative and be able to answer any questions and, um. Yeah, so we'll get started. So what exactly are dark skies? Um, well, dark skies are places that are relatively free. From the interference of artificial light at night. And artificial light at night can, um, produce light pollution, which is unwanted or unnecessary lighting. Um, as you'll see on the graphic on the right here in the presentation. Um, a typical light source, um, has approximately only forty percent of that light. Um, being directed towards the ground or its intended target. That's because a lot of conventional lighting isn't fully shielded, it's not directed to where it needs to be. And a lot of light escapes upwards into our night sky, um, disrupting our view of the night sky. And another ten percent of that light also is emitted horizontally, which results in glare. Um, when you receive light, um, into your eyes, it constricts your pupil and affects your ability, um, to be able to see. So, um, this is just a graphic kind of showing of how conventional lighting, um, actually has a lot of energy waste. Um, the Jevons Paradox. Um, this is where you have an increase in efficiency and resource use. With the mention of LED lighting and, um, more LEDs coming onboard since like twenty nineteen. It's really what the majority of people use nowadays. Um, it really generated an increase in resource efficiency. They're really well rated for efficiency. But unfortunately, because that resource is so cheap and is accessible, more people are actually using. More lighting, um, and more than they need because it's just cheap and accessible to use. Um, so that's kind of a comparison on the screen there showing, you know, on the top image, um, lighting that. Is kinda used in a appropriate amount, whereas the image below really shows a, a, um. A street that's overly lit and has a lot more lighting that's, than is actually needed to function. So because of, um, light pollution, now eighty percent of North Americans can no longer see the Milky Way. So, and worldwide, a third of the world's population can no longer see the Milky Way. Um, light pollution is increasing at ten percent per year. Um, so it's really, um, a problem that's becoming more, um. More predominant in our society. So why is this important? Well, for multiple reasons. Um, one being night sky heritage, um. You know, people really enjoy stargazing at night. I think it's hard to find someone who doesn't enjoy looking up at the night sky and seeing. Um, a universe filled with stars. It also represents a lot of importance to different cultures and societies across the world. You know, our ancestors experienced the night sky brimming with stars and were able to, um, tell stories about their ancestors. And their way of life and being, you know, um, people use stars for navigation. Um, people use the stars at night to understand seasons and knowing when to plant and when to harvest. Um, there's so many things that have come from our night skies and that are important to us today. Um, you know, including literature and arts and, um, science, um, a lot of good has come from our night sky. Um, the second reason, ecological integrity. Almost all life on Earth, um, is dependent on natural darkness at night, um. Especially nocturnal wildlife that use natural darkness for, um, hunting, um, to be able to reproduce. There's a lot of biological requirements that really associate with natural darkness. And taking that away disrupts our ecological integrity. Um, third reason, energy conservation and climate. Um, as I kind of already expressed, um. Lighting that is not directed towards the ground at its intended target and is wasted at night is a function of energy waste. Um, that, that energy can be, um, redirected and more beneficial through the use of dark sky friendly lighting. Which we'll get to later in this presentation. Um, human health, um, there has been numerous studies on how artificial light at night impacts our, our health. Um, not only does it impact, um, sleep disorders like insomnia, but there's also. A relation to different types of cancer. Um, and it really directly impacts the production of the hormone melatonin in our body. Which, as you probably know, helps us sleep at night. So a lot of, a lot of the human health relation is associated with. Your ability to sleep and get a, um, good night's rest. Um, public safety, so contrary to what many people believe, more lighting is not necessarily better. Um, there have been studies that have shown that there's actually no correlation between increased light and reduced crime at night. Um, it's, the research is really inconclusive. Um. We have reason to believe if we use artificial light at night in a responsible manner that. Fully shields the light and directs the light towards the ground or it's an, it's intended target. Um, that reduces opportu- opportunity for blower or light trespass, which, um, disrupts and, um. Creates hazards and risks for public safety. So, um, this slide is really getting to, um, the program and effort that we're spearheading here in the. In south central Colorado. So through Dark Sky International, um, it's a nonprofit entity. And the leading agency combating light pollution worldwide. They have an international dark sky places program in which they certify dark sky places all across the world. That are working to preserve and protect dark sites through responsible lighting policies and public education. So, um, SLB Go and several regional partners across the area have been working together to try and establish an international dark sky reserve. So the map shown here is a kind of draft, um, of the current reserve that we're hoping to get certified. So the purple boundary is kind of the external boundary here of the dark sky reserve. And then you'll notice a blue line that encompasses Great Sand Canyon National Park and the Songrate Crystal Wilderness. That area is what is called the core of the reserve or. Um, it, it really meets the minimum sky quality criteria by Dark Sky International. So to become certified, you have to ensure that, um, your skies are dark and that they remain dark. And part of that is by taking sky quality measurements to show and present to Dark Sky International. So that's been something that our organization and with volunteers across the region have been doing for some time now. Um, and this reserve would stretch as far north as Salida, um, to as far south as the state line with New Mexico. And then as far east as La Vida and as far west as Alamosa. But as I mentioned, this is really kind of an initial proposed boundary. And because our efforts are still ongoing, we have plenty of time to be able to revise this and work with communities around the region. To be able to potentially expand that boundary outwards and ensure that. You know, our communities are taking full advantage of the dark sky resource that is here. Um, this image is just a image of light pollution across the state of Colorado. Um, it's kind of a zoomed in portion of just. Um, well, no, sorry, that is the whole state there. Um, but you'll notice that in. South central Colorado there, you'll see the valley. Um, there's some, some spots that are brighter and the more yellow color. Um, it's indicating that there's a higher amount of light pollution in that area. The yellow spot there is Alamosa and of course you can see Montavista to the west of that and, um. Yeah, so that just kinda gives you an idea of where a light pollution is across the state. And currently, I wish I had put this in the presentation, but there are fifteen international dark sky places within Colorado right now. That have worked to ensure that. They have adopted lighting policies, done public outreach and education to really ensure the future preservation of their night sky. So here are some steps, um, to become certified. So. We've worked on many of these and accomplished, um, a lot like convening our coalition. So we have a Songrate Crystal Dark Sky Coalition Group. Within the region, um, that includes groups from. All over the San Luis Valley, but also on the east side of the Songres, like in Werfenow County, Chapee County, um. You know, representatives of local governments, um, land trusts, other nonprofit groups that are all working together to try and achieve this dark sky reserve. Um, as I mentioned, we've conducted sky brightness measurements. So we've gone throughout the area and have utilized just a photometric meter. Which essentially quantifies, um, the sky brightness in that, in that area. Um, so we have a database with sky brightness measurements. Um, we've inventoried outdoor lighting in Alamosa so far. And are hoping to do that in other communities like Salida as well. Um, we've done a lot of engagement and education with the public and community officials across the region. Um, and we're also developing a lighting plan right now, um, which would essentially be. Uh, guidelines and standards for community and, um, local government jurisdictions to. Adopt and make sure that we're meeting the minimum criteria by Dark Sky International for this certification. Um, so it is really kind of that common document that supports, um, local government from. Kind of buying into that initiative and being able to adopt their own lighting policies that are reflective of Dark Sky International standards. Um, so the biggest, um, kind of criteria to me for Dark Sky International on this certification. Is a lighting management plan and, which I was just speaking to, but it, that plan needs to be adopted by at least eighty percent of the population. And the area within the proposed reserve boundary. So that's something that, um, we're looking at now to be able to identify. You know, different populations and communities within the reserve, um, that would be. Um, interested in adopting new dark sky friendly outdoor lighting policies to support, um, the management plan in this effort. So you might be wondering what exactly dark sky friendly lighting looks like. Um. So dark sky friendly lighting is lighting that's fully shielded, meaning that. Light, um, is only produced ninety degrees and lower, so there's no uplight, um. The Kelvin temperature is three thousand or lower, which is really the color temperature that you perceive of a light. Um, three thousand Kelvins is kind of that, um, white lighting, whereas anything lower than that is gonna become more yellow or more amber. Kind of a softer hue. Um. It's lighting that reduces glare and light trespass. It's focused when it, um, where it's needed. And incorporates controls like dimming and motion sensors to make sure that that lighting is only on and when it's needed. Here's some just, um, good examples of what dark sky friendly lighting looks like. You'll notice everything's fully shielded. Um, targeted towards the ground. And then here are some of the more specific, um. Details of that lighting management plan and the minimum requirements from Dark Sky International to reach certification. Um, so I know this is a lot of text, but really it's about having that fully shielded light fixture. Using the right color temperature, um, and then another portion of it is about illuminated signs at night. And making sure that, um. That lighting is only used when and where it's needed. So having a, a curfew. And some provisions around design for signage to ensure that that lighting, um. Is only illuminated to the amount it needs to be and that it's only used when it's needed. Um, so I think this initiative has a lot of alignment, um, with city planning and with county planning within the region. Um, so the Rio Grande County's Joint Master Plan, um. Let's see, the county adopted a new lighting resolution back in two thousand and eight. And that, um, resolution really spoke to dark sky lighting, um, saying that all new lighting must be directed downward and fully shielded. Um, and then, you know, just upcoming projects like, like the Larriett Ditch Trail, um, that's a project. That I know many community residents express concern about lighting and making sure that lighting would be included in that project if it were to proceed. Um, and this is just the kind of showcase, you know, potential lighting that is dark sky friendly, but really. Promotes, um, efficient and safe use of a trail at night. Um, so there's a lot of options where, you know, we can still have lighting on a trail at night and make sure that. People feel safe and, um, are able to recreate, um, in the evening or early morning hours. Um, so some potential concerns that. Um so some potential concerns that, you know, people might have about this initiative is always the idea of. Um potential costs. And the great thing about this is that. Um the city and its residents um wouldn't be required to like replace any existing lighting. Everything could be grandfathered in. And any new um outdoor lighting ordinance that would adopted could um just ensure that. Future development or new lighting um would adhere to these new dark sky friendly standards. Um enforcement, um enforcement of lighting typically looks like um complaint based. And I think that's probably how the city is managing any kind of lighting um complaints now. Um so it would be similar to that except we kind of have this um proactive portion where. You know, building permits or special review permits would um incorporate a lighting management plan within their proposal. Basically outlining what types of lights they're using, where they're going to be placed. Um just kind of checking those boxes and making sure that they're dark sky friendly. And then, you know, back again to the safety and security concern. Um I just want to emphasize that a dark sky doesn't mean a dark ground. You know, this isn't saying that we don't want lighting. We know lighting is really useful and beneficial for society and um for everyday functioning. Um and visibility should always be the goal and we can have that with dark sky friendly lighting. And actually improve that by mitigating glare and ensuring that light is directed to where it's needed. Um so with that, you know, my proposal is um for the city and council. To just kind of review and take a look at the current city's lighting ordinance. I've been able to take a quick review of it myself. Um but just being able to think about how we can improve the current ordinance. To become more dark sky friendly, you know, making sure that we maintain the quality of our night skies. And also have that opportunity to improve public health and safety and protect our natural environment. So with that, I'll just open it up to questions and um I just want to thank you all for um letting me take the time. To present this initiative to you. Thank you.
Have you done an inventory of the cities here in the valley to see how we would rate currently for dark skies?
As far as like sky quality or what lighting you have?
Both.
Both. Um yeah, so for the sky quality, you know, there's a um. The the sky quality is measured in magnitudes per square arc seconds, which is very confusing. But essentially it's the scale from sixteen magnitudes per square seconds to twenty-two. And it's kind of inverse where twenty-two is actually um darker and sixteen is brighter. So, you know, we're looking at typically between um twenty. We're like in the twenty-one range, like twenty-one to twenty-one and a half typically, like everywhere I've. I've um taken brightness measurements and I've, we've gone. I don't know if I've taken any in Montavista proper, but we've gone um a lot around the Alamosa area. Kind of southern like San Luis Valley, Costilla County. Um there's been a lot of measurements taken around Crestone, so we're definitely very dark, um which is awesome. But really this initiative is to try and, you know, maintain that darkness. Make sure that with adequate education and outreach, the adoption of, you know, lighting policies. That are reflective of dark skies, we can make sure that we're maintaining that resource. And with future development, we hope to, you know, mitigate any more potential light pollution. So and with the like, as far as lighting on the ground, you know, we've inventoried Alamosa. And a lot of their city-owned lighting um is not dark sky friendly. But the good thing with this initiative is that there's not really a compliance rate you have to adhere to to become certified. For at least the reserve certification. Um but it gives us kind of a baseline on how we can, you know, look for funding, look for grant opportunities. Which, you know, a lot of like federal agencies like the EPA, you know, are looking to support energy conservation initiatives. Um which dark skies definitely falls into, so um yeah, there's a lot of great opportunities out there. And I have noticed that the city of Montavista, you guys have exceptional um lighting like on on the main street. Um as you're going through town, you guys have fully shielded lights and although I haven't taken like a. A color temperature reading of those lights, I would guess they're probably around three thousand Kelvin. But you guys are looking pretty good, actually. Yeah, yeah.
So Excel came around and I think, I don't know, the city was involved, they changed the lights of the streetlights.
Who did? Excel?
Excel did.
Okay, yeah.
Those lights are, yeah.
And Excel, yeah, Excel owns almost all of this.
All been changed LEDs.
Yeah.
So how do those lights?
Right, so I think most of the LEDs and streetlights that Excel owns. They're probably going to be above three thousand Kelvins, um which is not great. Like we'd want three thousand Kelvins or less. And I have been in touch with Excel Energy to just kind of try and get that inventory and understand, you know, what lighting. They've replaced and kind of what the characteristics of that lighting is um. And they've been somewhat easy to work with, but I haven't gotten a lot of interest from them. And, you know, thinking about any kind of incentives or ways to try and replace lighting that, you know, was. Somewhat recently installed, thinking of just like the efficiency of LEDs and not wanting to put a lot of. Cost into replacing something that was done recently. But yeah, we'll kind of have to keep talking with them and seeing what we can do to enhance the already existing lighting.
You know, all switch the LED at some point in time because you cannot buy a condensing or fluorescent bulb anymore.
Yeah, well, you can, but yeah, you're right, like LED is definitely the.
Yeah, they're stopping manufacturing as far as like to the public and stuff, someone's public, so LED's your choice.
Yeah, and so the good thing is that because the science and technology is progressing so quickly. Um LEDs are now being designed to have like a kind of color corrected. You know, filament or covering option. Yeah, some of them are, you know, adjustable and um there's something that's called like a a narrow band LED. And it basically, you know, has wavelengths um in a longer spectrum, so it's warmer colored. It's more dark sky friendly. So science and technology like that, as it continues to advance, those. Warmer colored LEDs are only going to become more cheaper and energy efficient. So, yeah, the science is already advancing a lot. Yeah.
Questions? Annie, thank you, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Learned something this evening, so thank you. So they can teach and learn new tricks. All right, we will go to ordinances, ordinance nine two nine and ordinance of this Montavista City Council. Uh regulating the possession of firearms in the Montavista City Buildings and Meeting Locations. Mr. Parrish?
Sure. Mayor, Council, um. As I was leaving the last meeting, um we had discussed uh. Senate Bill one thirty-one or, yeah, and um it's twenty-four one thirty-one. Which basically uh prohibited firearms in. Uh public places like the city hall and um. That and I explained to the council that the legislature had also built into that bill. An opt-out provision that the city could opt out of that and allow uh concealed carries. And as I was leaving, the mayor asked me if I would uh go ahead and draft something, so I started working on that. And I contacted um also a touch base with Commissioner Howard. Um see where you wanted to go with that. And then I did some um bouncing off of. The CERSA and uh CML sources and so forth to see what had been done. Quite a few municipalities are opting out of this provision to allow concealed carries. So I uh worked up an ordinance and then I fine tuned that ordinance and revised it after that. Based on the input that I'd received from you. And basically, what we've come down with now is um a couple of provisions, which would be additions to our code. Which basically says pursuant to the provisions of CRS eighteen twelve, one oh five point three four B. It shall not be a violation of CRS eighteen twelve one oh five three three. For any person to carry a carry concealed firearm in any municipal building. Or municipal parking lot adjacent to city buildings, as long as such persons have complied with the provisions of CRS eighteen twelve two oh one. That seek regarding permits to carry concealed weapons. Provided further, nothing in this subsection is intended to allow firearms in those places specified in CRS eighteen twelve. One oh five point three one C, in other words, firearms in judicial buildings. Or portions of city hall devoted to judicial proceedings. And we added that open carry of firearms in all public buildings is prohibited except for law enforcement officers. Uh the next section stated that any persons who desire to avail themselves of concealed carrying provisions of this subsection. Shall obtain a concealed carry permit as authorized by the provisions of CRS eighteen twelve two oh one at C. And they shall have uh and shall have such permit current with them at all times while exercising. Their rights on city property pursuant to the above subsections. Those are the two provisions that I ended up with after going through uh various provisions here. Um so. The basically what this kind of reduces itself down to is uh. You, as you sit here now, if you're concealed carrying, you would be violating provisions of the law. If we do not opt out. Um so the opt-out pertains to the provisions of inside of city hall. Because it's a municipal building where uh the council sits. Um and um it uh, there are specific provisions, I was asked. Like uh the kids connection, for example, or city property. So is is the, there's a specific provision later on in the legislation that prohibits weapons. In buildings that are childcare centers. So it would not, you'd not be able to do it there. However, all other municipal areas. Uh um would be not prohibited for concealed carrying, uh the parks, uh the uh. The uh public works uh yards uh, you know, other areas like that. And so how does that affect this building? Um I think the line would be drawn here at uh the uh court. Offices over here, the court itself uh and probably the offices surrounding the court. Nita's office, for example, the waiting rooms out there, uh the uh, any conference rooms. Anything attached to the judicial system, because that is specifically prohibited. Um there is a provision, uh somebody just uh. Happens to want to know about, well, how about open carry then? Uh CRS um twenty-nine uh dash eleven point seven. Dash one oh four says local government may enact an ordinance regulation or other law that prohibits the open carrying of firearms. In a building or specific area within the local government's jurisdiction. If local government enacts an ordinance regulation or the law that prohibits open carrying of firearm in a building. Or a specific area, the local government shall post signs at the public entrances to the building. Or specific area informing persons that the open carrying of firearms is prohibited in the building or a specific area. So that addresses the open carrying and this ordinance, in other words, would allow. Um concealed carry uh as this assembly is assembled here right now and in this part of the building. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Once again. State government trying to impose their will on the rest of the state, so that's my issue with that, so.
And they did allow an opt-out as far as part of this goes, Jerry.
Anybody else have questions?
The uh. I did review the constitutional provisions, uh which uh really on the Bill of Rights. Uh the Colorado Bill of Rights addresses protection, protections for your home. Um your uh person, uh your property, that kind of thing with the carry of farms. So um within those parameters. So this is up for first reading and uh. We'll have second reading, I guess, the usual time.
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-nine.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine two nine on first reading. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson? Mayor Protagonist Bella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-nine on first reading. And ordinance of the Montavista City Council regulating the possession of firearms in the Montavista City Buildings and Meeting Locations.
Okay, we'll go to contracts, agreements and leases. Updating the airport lease.
Evening, Council. Our airport lease, I don't, who knows how how old it had been? And leases, um we go into lease with the hangar owners for twenty years. Um so this year, twenty twenty-four, at the end of December, most all of them will have expired. So we might get this out to them and get it um get their leases back and continue. A couple of things, so it was Rob, Rob Vance, Jed Ella Thorpe, who is our fixed base operator at the airport. And myself worked with Gene in order to get this to the point where it is now. And on a positive side, we have somebody interested in building a new hangar out there. And so they they're anxious to get this underway, say, okay, let's get going. So a couple of of changes that we made in kind of cleaning up the language. One is that we we state that the person building the hangar. Will have to pay forty-five cents per square foot until it is built. And that's kind of, that's kind of standard. And then because it's a higher rate, that encourages them to get up, get going. And then once um the construction is finished, then they will pay twenty-two cents per square foot.
For what? Year, per month, week, day?
Year, yeah. Yeah.
Square foot of the building, square foot of the property.
Square foot of the building. The um, we've been working with Excel Energy about doing a line extension. As well as a uh requiring that any. New hangar has to go on natural gas because there is a natural gas line up there. Anyone, the rest of them right now have propane. And so that. The, the rules of pro having propane tanks have to have kicked it out so far from the building and. It then impacts how we have the distance between so that airplanes can safely travel through. Um, down the taxiways. The other. We put in that we would charge them twenty five dollars a month if they're late with their payment, if we don't receive it by ten days after January first. And that was because we had a. A commercial operator out there that was three years behind and we could not get his attention. And so I finally asked our attorney to write a letter to evict him. And lo and behold, we received the full payment by the last day that it was due. So. Um, so having a late fee may help be a little bit bigger hammer. Rob, do you have anything to add?
I think we've covered. Most everything and working with Jed as a representative, not only for our airport, but also. The pilots, I think we have a lease that the pilots will like. They won't like the necessary cost. They like lower costs, but we think it's it's fair, it's equitable. The fees that we're charging are equivalent to what other airports are charging.
Yeah, and.
So what's, so a typical hangar will be the fee for a typical, and I understand that. Well, this is all GA aircraft out there, so you're not talking about jet jets or something.
Well, yeah, would you go real quick?
The majority of what's out there is general aviation. Um, there are two commercial businesses, egg sprayers.
Right.
Um.
But airplanes aren't that big either.
But yeah, they're they're classified as a V sixty. Um, so, um, but the the new hangars that space. Um, there are some opportunities with the land to do more of a commercial type. So we're developing, we've done a rep, the private license is the the lease Gigi has now. And she's instructed us to start working on a commercial lease for those type of entities.
Yeah, one thing I want to point out though, the twenty two cents per square foot on a hangar right now. Is a decrease. Their old leases had thirty cents. And we went ahead and lowered it to be more competitive with other small airports in the region. It's like Del Norte, they've been building like gangbusters and theirs is at seventeen cents a square foot.
And they had like ten new hangars out there or something like that, that they just built in the last two years.
Yeah. So um, they're gonna be the commercial rate, I'm gonna discuss raising it up a little bit. But for the the reg- regular GAs is lowered. And then the city owns two hangars out there. And kind of our deal with Mr. Ella Thorpe is he gets to lease those out to whomever he can. And then that's basically his pay. So. It's. We're trying to stay.
That's where we kept our plane.
Yes, we have a mayor's plane. Jets off the special events. No, no, on the record, that's not true. The city does not own an airplane.
No, I do not.
Yeah, it it's actually not a lot of money and um. We're trying to come up with other ways that we can. Generate other revenue out of the airport. You know, it is a city asset and. So on for this killing, I need to go to Gigi goes and looks real quick on what the average is paying. We do have an airport project going on out there right now and they are extending the taxiway. And so by extending the taxiway, that will. That's allowing us to go ahead and get a new um hangar built as well. So.
We probably talk to you five hundred dollars a month. It's typical.
It's a year.
It's a year.
Typical airplane.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's about three hundred bucks. So it's not a lot. You know, the big thing with the FAA is that you have to make sure that that. The um hangars themselves are used strictly for aviation purposes. So, you know, someone can't go out there and rent one as a storage and keep their RV in it. And excess furnishings and stuff. It's for airport operations.
So sixty by sixty hangar under these would be about eight hundred and twenty eight dollars a year is what they'd be paying.
Okay, and what was it at thirty cents?
Thirty cents.
It's more like a thousand.
Yeah.
Sixty seven or something like that. So we just need a motion to um. Adopt this airport lease and we can get moving on.
So move.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to uh adopt the airport lease. As stated by city manager. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Lorenz?
Upstate.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protip Sibella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the updating of the airport lease uh four to one abstaining.
We'll move on to financial reports.
Hi Danny.
I had trouble collecting this actually, just slightly over two thousand dollars a year, so.
Thank you, Charles.
Good evening, counsel. My dog and phone show. Meeting myself, so I'm sorry. Um, okay, I guess we're ready to go. Thanks Nina for helping me out. Um, June twenty twenty four.
Making a bigger.
You can see those a little better.
Oh, thank you.
Good. Um, city's completed fifty percent of the twenty twenty four fiscal year cash balance in the main checking account. Uh, is three million seventy four thousand eighty seven dollars. From the general fund, water fund, four hundred and nine thousand six hundred and twenty two, sewer fund. One million one hundred and sixty three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Revenue in excess of expenditures in the general fund, three hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Water fund, sixty eight thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars and sewer fund, three hundred thousand. Three hundred twenty two thousand six hundred and sixty two. Total expenditures percent of the of the approved budget amounts, general fund is at forty six percent. Water fund, twenty six percent, sewer fund, twenty seven percent. Uh, counts receivable.
Reason why the water fund is so far.
It's the debt service. We haven't made the payment, big payments yet. Um, I had to look that up too. I thought this is weird. So it makes sense to me now. And more I get into this stuff, the better I understand. Um, counts receivable, general fund increase from June of twenty three was seventy three thousand seven hundred and sixteen. Was related to a correction of court receivable records, property tax receivable increase and an increase in sales, highway and franchise tax receivables. The water fund increases seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty is related to an increase in receivable for utility billings. Property tax receivable and a correction to a straight out full accounts. Sewer fund increase fifty five thousand eight hundred and eighty nine related to the receivable for utility billings. And a receivable recorded for the wastewater. Grant of twenty five thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. That one will clear up in July because we bought that money. Um, accounts payable. Accounts payable in general fund is lower than last year, however, uh doing, due to an unpaid benefit invoice, it shows slightly higher. The water and sewer fund counts payable are both much lower as of June twenty twenty four due to lower general AP in June. And compensated absence is. Revenues, general fund increase overall since last, over last year of three hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred and eighty four. Uh, related to tax revenues. Um, remember from the property tax or Grand County City Sales Tax and Highway User Tax. We've had a slight increase in business licenses and building permits. We've used ARPA funds for boiler units, mosquito sprayer, PD lighting, power upgrades. We've gotten federal grants for PD drug testing equipment, recruitment, retention, and receipt of IHOP grant funds. We've had an increase in recreation sports fees, increasing court costs and fines. And also increases in Sky High rents of about twenty six thousand. So that's good. Water fund overall increase of twelve thousands related to increased charges for services. Sewer sewer fund overall increase of two hundred and nineteen thousand. Is due to an increase um in state grant funds for the wastewater engineering of fifty five thousand four hundred and thirty four dollars. We've had increased charges in services as well as new sewer taps. Uh, general fund monthly uh comparison, general fund revenues average four hundred and forty five thousand seven hundred and thirty eight. Dollars per month. June's revenue sits right on the average line, pretty darn close to it anyway. Uh, general property tax. Uh, actually rallied in June to make up for the dive we had in May. And on average, the city is on track to be slightly higher in property tax revenue over last year. Compared to June of twenty twenty three, the city has collected forty seven thousand dollars more in twenty twenty four. Um, rear grand county tax came in slightly lower this month, causing our year to date through June to be five hundred and forty five dollars lower than twenty twenty three. So it's pretty darn close. City sales tax revenue continues to trend higher than the last two years. Uh, year to date for June of twenty twenty four. Is approximately thirty nine thousand dollars higher than last year. Overall tax revenue is up compared to June of twenty twenty three by a hundred and seventy six thousand. Uh, hundred and ten thousand is attributable to the state tax reimbursement we got from Senate Bill twenty two. Uh, expenditures. Overall expenditures in the general fund have increased through June due to. I think I've talked about this before, the police department salaries um finally fully staffed. Increased staff for Sky High, increase in wages and benefits in all departments. Overlap in positions for training purposes, mine. Increase in general liability insurance. Uh, we did a landscaping project at the chamber building that was paid by the law grant. Uh, we purchased drug testing and investigation equipment for PD that was reimbursed for grants. Purchased the boiler units, lighting for PD, H back for the tower, mosquito sprayers all paid through ARPA funds. Holiday lights that were reimbursed through donations. Engineering services for planning and upgrades for the parks. Uh, water fund increase in expenditures due to wages and benefits, increase in general liability insurance and professional services. The sewer fund actually shows a decrease as of June. Compared to last year only because we had that civil penalty last year that we obviously don't have this year. Otherwise, wages, benefits, uh engineering expenses, all of that. Maybe it's an increase. Um, monthly comparison, general fund expenditures average three hundred and eighty one thousand two hundred and forty three dollars per month. June's expenditures came in at sixty four thousand dollars below that average. Finally, comparing monthly budgeted amounts for expenditures at fifty pers- fifty percent of the budget year were under budget by four percent in the general fund. Some departments within the general fund are slightly over budget, some are under, but overall the city is managing them the budgets. The current ratio is uh four dollars and nine cents of current assets for every one dollar of liability. And we have eight point six seven months of operating expenses in the general fund's total unassigned fund. Any questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, Judy. I was waiting for the dogs and pose to them, but.
Okay, we'll go to staff proposal, reports and actions. Recreation. Burton.
We'll be short and sweet. Good evening, council. So apparently we're taking registrations for tackle football, flag football, um and girls volleyball. Uh, one of the things that we're most proud of is our collaboration and programs. Uh, CPW, we're doing hunter safety training, lore foundation, um did two back to school. Uh, giving out backpacks, school supplies, uh to kids here in the community. Um, we also were with uh game day three sixty. They did an NFL flag football league for us. Here every Friday and Saturday, um kids from all over. Uh. All of the uh Monogista kids though are scholarshiped into the program, which is pretty cool. They have a. Uh, they have forty nine's team, Broncos team, of course, and Packers, and they have like eight teams. And so it's like really cool to be out there. We also did uh. A cleanup out at Shriver Wright Home Lake um with uh Colorado Parks Wildlife. Um, the veterans, Valley Veterans Association and I went out there and picked up one trash or whatnot. Uh, cooked some hamburgers, hot dogs, and had a good time. And that's it for recreation. Any questions?
Oh.
We talked about duck tank. Thank you.
You're darn near living that thing by now, so.
There, there, thank you. Kids connection.
Good evening, council. Um, I will be short and sweet as well. Our after school program began on Monday, so I'm very thankful when we see kiddos for two hours a day. Well, ten hours on Friday, but it beats forty hours a week. It was a lot. We love them, but after eleven weeks of the summer. I'm so happy to give them back to school this night too. Um, attendance started really low at the beginning of this week because they do a staggered start at Marsh. Um, but as of today, we had sixty kids in attendance um during after school. Um, the school district also worked with us. Um, one of the school board members, we have her kiddo. And she really needed a ride in the bus right away. So the school district's now um fast tracking the waivers for the bus riders that come over. I'm not sure if you are aware that not all kids in the school district are eligible to ride the school bus. And the school bus has been, or the school district's been taking care of transportation for Marsh kit, Marsh kids for kids connection. Um, if they're not eligible to ride the bus, they have to get on a waiver form and sign the waiver form. And then the school district actually has to approve it before they can ride the bus to us. They worked out whatever they needed to work out and the kids, once the parents fill out paperwork, note that they need to ride the bus to kids connection. They are allowing those kids to get on the bus once that form is signed. So there's no delay. There was like up to a month delay sometimes if you missed the monthly school board meeting before those waivers were approved. Now they're fast tracked and they can be approved and the kids can ride that same day if they need to. Um, so it's helped out our parents a lot. Um.
What uh?
Yes.
What's a criteria that kids can't ride? You have a sense of that?
It is, it was really confusing to me. They've explained it to me a bunch of times, but basically there are boundaries within city limits that kids are able to ride. They're able to ride the bus. There are certain requirements within the county that they're able to ride the bus as well, but I'm not exactly sure. How that whole thing works because we have bus routes that go within city limits, then we have some bus routes that go with um out of city limits. But there are some kids that I think if you live within a certain distance of the school, you're not eligible to ride the bus. And you have to be put on a waiver in order to do so.
So, so I, if you can walk to school, you can't ride the bus. So, so I, if you can walk to school, you can't ride the bus.
Basically, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so we had our breakfast burrito fundraiser for the Faith Kingly Memorial um, Park. Veterans part, that's a whole lot of words, but we had our breakfast burrito fundraiser, um, we raised close to four hundred dollars um, by selling breakfast burritos. Uh, we did, well, we didn't, there was a community night set up, I'm not sure if it was fully financed department, somebody. Arranged for um, a community night with the Colorado Grill. Um, and uh, the Colorado Grill between all three locations raised two or seven, seven, my goodness, my brain is not functioning. It's been like this all day. You asked Judy, I was trying to get the state to reimburse us a million dollars a year for food costs.
Never hurts to try.
No, that's what I thought, I thought I was completely wrong and I knew it was wrong, but I couldn't figure out why. Nine hundred and twenty-six dollars um, for the community night. Um, and then when I was here at the beginning of July, I let you guys know about a presentation that I had to El Pomar and I was guaranteed a thousand dollars just by showing up. I showed up, gave my presentation and walked out of there so scared because I walked into the room. There was no introductions, there was nothing, they put me in a room with like sixteen people sitting at a table, they were like, sit here and you go, you have three minutes. I panicked major, I had everything printed out, ready to go and I was a hot mess, I walked out of there and I was like, they're not gonna give me any money. Um, they must have felt sorry for me because they did give to us, and we're gonna get um, eight thousand, five hundred dollars from El Pomar for that presentation to help with um, operating expenses. And purchase a milk cooler for Kids Connection to help the uh, food service program run a little smoother. Um, I just submitted the Colorado or the nutrition application for the child and adult food care program. Through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And that was the one that I was talking about, I was putting in. Numbers for the month that they needed numbers for a day, so it was looking at, we were gonna get reimbursed. An estimated one point one million dollars for the year by just serving after-school snacks and a lunch on the Fridays.
They should keep trying.
Well, the email's going back and forth and I had so many questions and then I just like sat there and I have to talk to myself a lot to try to figure it out. And I finally was like, oh my gosh, you're such an idiot. And Judy was like, it says monthly up there, but you need the daily numbers and I was like, I totally see it now. My ADHD goes on a fast track and it only sees important words and monthly was important, the days didn't matter to me. Um, so that has been submitted, as long as it gets approved, then we will be serving the after-school stack and a breakfast. Uh, breakfast snack, a lunch and a afternoon snack on Fridays, the after afternoon stock is Monday through Thursday for the after-school program. Um, and that's more than what we've been done before, but since we're taking on the program all by ourselves without a sponsor, um, we're able to provide more food for our kiddos. Um, on September thirteenth, we will be um. Hosting a table at the back-to-school bash um, with the school district for their season opening home game. So come out and support the. Uh, pirate football team as they kick off their season. And stop by our booths or send people to stop by our booth so they can get information about Kids Connection. Um, they'll have free food and a bunch of different cool stuff set up. That's probably the dump thing that everybody needs to talk to you about.
Now, it's not a dump tank, they want people to volunteer and then they'll dump water on top of you.
That's the dunk bucket.
Dunk bucket.
I was a part of that last year.
Yes, they want a dunk bucket, volunteer.
He gets one bath a year and he's not gonna lose. It's gonna be more water by by time.
Um, and then the last thing I have coming up is September sixth, our after-school AmeriCorps members will be starting with Kids Connection to support us on Fridays. Um, and then we will have them through the middle of next summer, so. We will get three AmeriCorps members to come help us out on Fridays and they're serving in our school district, well, they'll start serving in the school district um, the first of September, so. And they'll come to us on Fridays. And that is all I got for you, if you have any questions for me.
Keep striving for that million dollars.
I would, it's a nice goal.
You want the back backstory on the fundraiser?
Sure.
So we had a very beautiful plant that got very huge and started touching the ceiling. And um, the owner of of the restaurants said he really wanted it. And so they came to me and said, can we just give him the plant? And I said, okay, as long as he makes a donation to Kids Connection and we won't say what, how much he should give, just from his heart. And he came back and said, how about if I do a fundraiser? So. Yeah. We made space in an office, got rid of a plant and you got reworked.
Yes. Program got there. And I got dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Sky high. Steph.
It's been a while since I've been here. Um, summer blinked and it's over, so. Since I haven't been here all summer, I'll give you kind of an overview of what we did, um, we survived. That's what we did, um, so we'll start you out with some numbers, uh, June, we ended up having thirty-one events. Uh, July, we ended up having twenty-two events. August, as of right now, we have seventeen, um, which I'll explain a little bit more about in a minute. And so far.
You can't stampede with just one of them?
I do count stampede as one of it. Mm-hmm. It's just one really long event. Uh, and then September, right now, we have um, nineteen events already scheduled. So that brings us up to as of today for events that we've already hosted and events that we have booked for the rest of the year, there are four hundred and seven events for twenty twenty-four. It's. August. Last year we ended with four hundred and seventy, so we're not far off from where we ended last year and we still have a long ways to go. Um, DJ and I sat down and did a quick. Numbers through placer, a set placer AI. That thing, um, so just to kind of give you a rough idea of what we've done, um. To date, we've had seventy-five thousand visitors to our property at Sky High. Again, it's August. Last year we had seventy-two thousand for the year. So we're already way over what we should have been or what we were last year, um, which is just crazy. Um, so last year for Stampede, we had. Well, I didn't put those numbers down for last year, but for this year. Um, we had a just under thirty-five thousand visitors. For the entire five-day event. Um, yeah, a lot of different people moving in and out of Montevista as well as the property, um. Which I think went really well this year and. We're adjusting to the new dates. Is what we're doing. Um, I will say for my staff members, it was very nice to have two and a half weeks in between Stampede and Fair as opposed to three days. Um, it gave us time to actually clean up and prepare better for Fair, um, instead of having just a couple of days to to shuffle through. Um, so I am giving that feedback to both Stampede and Fair as well. Um, for Fair this year, they changed from an eight-day event to a ten-day event, um, which was a lot on our staff. Um, typically, we have um, the restrooms open from six AM to midnight every single day. Um, which includes staffing for those timeframes as well, and so it's just a really, really long event for our staffing to be there for that long each day for ten days straight. Um, but I feel like Fair went a lot smoother this year because of that transition, um, they had less um, incidents on their part with their kids. Um, and just kind of how their scheduling went, it went a lot smoother this year. So that was good. Um, our summer kind of got flip-flopped this year, so last year we had most of our quinceañeras and weddings in June. Um, and August, we kind of were. More business meetings, um, and that totally flipped this year, so June, we did more business meetings and now all of our weddings and quinceañeras are coming up now in August. Um, so that's what we're getting ready to jump back into, um, which is always fun. Our next big event is going to be the Sandless Valley Rural Philanthropy Day. Um, so the valley gets that every four years, um, and it rotates between different communities. Um, this year, the city of Bonavista and the city of Alamosa co-hosted, um, so it will be September eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth. Um, the eleventh and twelfth will be at Sky High during the day for all of the programming pieces and then all of the socials will be in Alamosa in the evenings. Um, and then. They'll be doing a tour on Friday as well as some health and wellness stuff in Alamosa on Friday. Um, so we'll have a bunch of different grant funders coming down from the front range as well as a lot of different nonprofits, um, here to do some grant writing and some other. Capacity building sessions for them. Um, and then the last thing I have is really, um. We're doing some reinforcements of our gates on our lovely new fencing. Um, they didn't quite reinforce those gates for how much weight they really are, um, and we've already had two of them broken. Um, so we are having the company come back and get them reinforced so that we can actually utilize them, how they need to be utilized. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. DJ, planning.
I have a lot of writing, but not a lot of talking, um. So it's been a while, just like Stephanie, because of some scheduling stuff, I've been here since May as well. Um, so since then, we did submit the EPA grants on nineteen July for the Larry Ditch Project. We should hear back with that within the next two weeks or so. They did release the first twenty-one successful grant applicants, uh, which basically are the guys that turned in on the first day it opened. Um, none of those are from Colorado, which is a good thing for us because that means our region should be getting some as we move forward in that process, so. Hopefully hear back about that in the next two weeks. Uh, we did hear or we received the contracts for both the EPA multipurpose uh. Grant, which was a million dollars for asbestos abatement in city buildings as well as uh, citywide uh, testing assessment. So we got that one back, we also got the contract back for the trees, uh, through the USDA Forest Service for uh, planting five hundred trees over the next three years. So both of those RFPs are currently with their parent agencies waiting for their review. Once we get those back, we'll get them publicized and out. So we should hopefully get those moving along, uh, the planning commission is continuing to work on the land use codes. Uh, we're, we're moving along quite well right now. We had a workshop earlier this month and we have another one coming up next week. Uh, we're gonna get pretty close to having all of the writing done and be ready for some editing, I'll be asking for a joint work session between. Planning, zoning and council, uh, probably the next. Hopefully a month and a half or so, so that we can start the public process to get them on the books and complete and get that off my table. Uh, we have multiple mine subdivisions and special review uses. Uh, that are pending to come to planning and zoning, just waiting on documentation. Um, and most of them are splits to put in houses, uh, so that's good, taking, you know, three or four lots and making them into, or one lot making into three or four lots. To create housing and then the special review uses for a modular zone that i- it's in the old burn area. Uh, from the, the fire we had that April. The URA continues to develop plans for building housing uh, in the properties that they own. Um, we did submit for a CHAFA technical assistance grant. That will help them do some of the due diligence prior to going after some grant money to put down some homes. Uh, so it's a technical system grants has absolutely no uh, cost for the city. And then I'm kind of, after, you know, talking to them and talking to Gigi, you know, I'm kind of at capacities for what I can manage. So the volunteers that serve on the URA have said that they will do most of the administering of that grant as far as. Making the meetings, doing the work to get that completed, so that we can start to get some of those houses down. So that's great, because sometimes it seems like we end up carrying uh, some of our commissions and doing a lot of work, it's really awesome to see some of them step up and say, I'll do these meetings and I'll go to these things. And I'll do some of the writing, which is nice. Um. As Stephanie said, we're using placer AI, I'm using it with a couple of different organizations, uh, Rio Grande County is the one that purchased it for us. Using tourism funds, um, and it is an amazing product as far as the data that I can get and gather. Um, so later on, I'll probably work on some good data for you guys, I'm just showing you what it is we're paying for, uh, because they did pay fourteen thousand dollars for it. Um, and if the city bought it by itself, it would have been about four grand. Um, and what I'm able to see is year-on-year trends, two-year, two-year trends, three-year trends. Um, and right now, we're reworking with the group to see if we can go back to pre-COVID numbers. Um, to see like what traffic changes, what tourism changes, so that we can do a better job of projecting both tourism dollars and our own uh, growth and change. Uh, so it's a really cool program, uh, it's really interactive, it's better. Uh, on a screen than it is on paper, I, I probably will never hand you a report from placer. Because it's not complicated to read, but it's not dynamic. Whereas I can zoom out and I can show you where our trade area is, I can show you where the people came to stampede or ag or any of those things. So at another time, we'll do a presentation of what that does for you. Uh, and I think it's impudent and impudent, important for the community to know that we have it because I can do it for businesses. If you want to know where you should be marketing, I can show you those things, if I, you want to know where your business is coming from, I can show you those things. Um, so they geofence, uh. Like the new O'Reilly's, once it opens, I'll geofence it and I'll see where the business is coming from, where are we taking that business from to and where are those customers at? Uh, and I can do the same thing with any business in town. I can't give them access to the program, but I can walk in the trip, so the chamber has access and I have access and we've been using it quite a bit uh, for the festivals and that kind of stuff. So, uh, short of any questions, I did a lot of talking, but that's really all I have.
City attorney.
Council. Well, there, there are no uh, Munichors uh, cases to report on because Munichors next week, this all fall. Falls in the, with our schedule. Uh, but just looking at the uh, expando file, it looks like a lot more cases than last time, so. I'll report on those after we get through with next week. I've uh. Mentioned already, uh, Senate Bill one thirty-one that we're putting work into and uh, there's uh. Uh, there's some interesting background to all that, I was, since I was researching that, uh, today, I came across a case that. Uh, was vaguely familiar. Um, and uh, back in nineteen seventy-nine, uh. The uh, county court of Rio Grande County. Found the statute unconstitutional of uh, person intoxicated person having firearm women. So then DA, yours truly, had a duty to uh. Appeal that. And we did appeal it to district court, district court agreed with the uh, county court. And then we had a duty, of course, to appeal it to the Supreme Court. Which overturned the county court and the district court. Um, and so that was established law. And that was kind of interesting while we were looking at some of the parameters of um, where the right to bear arms uh. Uh, is, is framed as far as the law in Colorado is concerned. So, um. I attended the URA meeting on August the sixth, uh. Some discussion there in deed restrictions. Um, what I kind of started picking up from that is the deed restrictions are tailored to the granting agencies uh. Needs basically, and uh, so you know, some of the new deed restrictions can be quite lengthy. Uh, and I think that we will probably try a process of just taking whatever those restrictions are, when it gets down to the deeds and attaching them. Uh, to the deeds and incorporating them into the deeds by reference, and that's probably easier way to do it than trying to incorporate all of that into one deed. So uh, that's what I'm looking at right now, we'll see, it comes down to what those parameters are. Going to be uh, with the restrictions we've got with the deeds going in URA. The uh, planning commission, I mean, I don't believe for the fifth. Uh, just thought I would tell you, uh, Justin Pepper indicated that he would accept the appointment uh, from um. The planning commission to the board of adjustment if you so appointing. Um, and we would uh, still need four more members, so Anita's in the process now of sending out the notices and uh, getting those. Some people, the parameters there and the qualifications are either being a um, resident of the city. Or um, owning. or, um, owning property or in possession of property. In other words, somebody out on, uh, Sherman Avenue, for example, uh, owned a business in town and was leasing the building even though they didn't own it. They'd be eligible under that. And, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, DJ will be making some suggested edits in the land use code for tables and diagrams under the zoning districts. So, uh, be looking forward to what he comes up with there. I've, uh, been in conference with, uh, Sean on, uh, the MTC model traffic code uh, concerning, uh, several offenses that he would like to see in there. This takes a little interpretation, uh, because the, the, uh, the code has, has been distributed to us from CDOT. Doesn't have certain things in it like, uh, no operator's license, uh, while driving, uh. It doesn't have in there, uh, the, uh, insurance charge, um, or driving, uh, um, it, it does send there, uh, driving under restraint. So we will, uh, probably be placing those. I don't see an intent to uh, preempt those areas, even though they're not attached to the model traffic code. Basically, they're four and three-point violations. So we will be trying to insert those, and some of the other municipalities seem to have those. So we'll be putting those in as we're working through the MTC. The, uh, we met today, uh, at the Bank of Montavista. The idea of, uh, marketing district came up involves a number of legal and political considerations, but I don't want to seal Gigi's thunder on that one, so she's going to report on that, I'm sure. So, uh, that's what we've been doing.
Okay. I'm glad you stay busy. I'm sorry. I said, I'm glad you stay busy, Jean. Thank you. No problem there. City Manager Report.
Okay. There's no secret meetings, but I am not giving an update on a meeting at the bank, so.
What about the airplane?
Okay, um, first of all, I've got a request, uh, we need to, I need to have a motion to make the final payment to Asphalt Con Constructors, Constructors, Inc., yeah, and also known as ACI. On July the eighteenth of twenty twenty-four, the city and Asphalt Constructors, Inc. held a final walkthrough on the Patterson and Dennis Street Improvement Project. There were a couple of items that needed addressed. Those items were completed on July the thirtieth and the prop project was considered complete and ACI were notified that the city would advertise for final payment. A newspaper advertisement was submitted to the Montavista Journal on August the first. Noted noting the request to issue final payment. This legal notice ran in the newspaper on August the seventh and again on August the fourteenth. This final, or this notice, a final settlement was also published on our website and on the city's Facebook page. As the deadline for persons to file a non-payment voucher against ACI, uh, they must, let's see, sorry, as the deadline for persons to file a non-payment voucher against ACI, they have to, ACI has passed, we, I'm sorry, if what, if sentence is a little out of whack. The bottom line is, I'm requesting that you approve thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents um, to make our final payment for that little project.
So you're trying to say that the time has passed for somebody to complain about making the final payment?
Thank you.
I got it. Motion to, motion, make that payment.
Thank you.
Second. But moved in second, seconded to, uh, prove the P- ACI, the final payment. Any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
All right.
Mayor Proton Segala?
All right.
Mayor Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the final payment for ACI for the Patterson and Dennis Street Park Project in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
So, uh, I'm going to ask you for a work session. I know you just love them so much. And in the next two weeks, um, I can only do it on Wednesday, either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth. What this will be in regards to is our new procurement and finance policy. And this is, it's rather substantial. And what I asked Judy to do is to make you guys all a hard copy. So that if you've got the time, you can kind of read through it. The most, um, the biggest, I think, thing that you need to think about in working with staff to come up with this is we want a little bit more leeway on the approval of expenditures. And so on page four, do you have that report? And like I said, it's not for discussion now, but I just want to call this to your attention. Now, we, we actually got most of this language um, from Grand Junction. So this is substantially different than our current policy from the standpoint of just how it's laid out and the flow of it. But on page four, we were asking that if we have a project that we believe will be less than five thousand dollars that the department director does not have to do a competitive bid on it. If the project is between five thousand and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, it can be approved by the department head if they do three documented competitive bids. And then we're asking for my authority to go up from twenty-five, it's currently twenty-five thousand to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand uh, for the city manager. And again, that would be through a competitive bid. And then anything fifty thousand dollars or more would go to you all.
You, you didn't mean four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, you meant forty-nine thousand. You're using the same answer.
I was like, I don't have that same.
Just making up numbers here.
Thanks for the catch. And then anything of a hundred thousand or more, there would be a formal advertised bid with request for proposal and all of that. So that is a change from the way we've currently are doing it. And in discussion with staff, the main reason we're, we're requesting this is just because the costs had gone up so substantially on big projects. On little projects, I should say. And so, um, we're having to do a lot of extra paperwork and things for projects that now if it's under five thousand dollars and we've got the money in the budget, can we just go ahead and, and get them done? So that's kind of, that's why we want to have discussion. Judy and I would like to meet with you guys on either August, August the twenty-first or the twenty eighth.
Twenty-first works better for me.
That could be better for me too.
New one? Okay, so that would be next Wednesday, five o'clock, five-thirty. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then we can, if you guys, whatever we decide or make any other changes, and then we'll bring it back then for that first meeting in September.
The, the language in that, you're going to fix that though?
Yes.
Because it says fifty thousand, uh, and a dollar or more. Aren't you asking for fifty thousand up to ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-five?
Yeah.
Nine thousand, whatever.
Yeah. Okay, that was the most important things right now. Um, it looks like the governor is going to be calling a special session for the legislators to address property taxes. There's two property and tax initiative on the ballot right now. That uh, that legislative council and, and the Joint Budget Committee are just saying this is going to be a real catastrophe. And of course, county government, that's their primary of revenue sources through property taxes. So the idea is get the legislators back in session, get an agreement, and then these two ballot initiatives would come off of the ballot. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot in the news coming up on it. There were several of us today that met with, uh, Davis Engineering. To start, they're going to, they were the ones that got the bid for the, um, generator, shower and RV spaces out at Sky High. So they'll go, they'll start doing their magic and come up with a plan and and we'll see how that looks in the next couple of months. Uh, one thing Stephanie didn't mention, uh, the police department and some of the other outside security and the sheriff's office met with some of the Stampede Committee members last night. And, um, discussed the security issues. And, you know, they, it's going to probably be an ongoing discussion. Numbers were down, beer stalls were down, so the fights were down. So all that's positive. But, um, they said from the concert, they lost twenty thousand dollars. They didn't lose. They did not earn uh, an additional twenty thousand dollars that they would have normally made if they may have had a different, um, concert choice. So it was kind of funny because they, they, last year they had Carly Pearce. That's old people didn't know who Carly Pearce was. And so they missed the older generation attending the concert. So they thought, well, we'll go to a known name, bring back the older people, which was great. But the younger people said, we don't know who that is. And so they didn't show up. And they're the biggest consumers of a malted beverage.
For sure. Not for lack of trying on that part of it.
So anyway, um, there's going to be some further security discussions about who they let in or where, where do we put the, the metal detectors? So that's ongoing. National Night Out was this last week. Thought it went well in spite of the rain. Um, people still hung around and they ran out of hamburgers. Even so, it was, it's kind of a fun, a fun night. So thanks for the PD for doing that. The Colorado Municipal League District Meeting is going to be on September the seventeenth. And that's down in La Jara, if you guys have a desire to go attend that. Uh, have you driven down Prospect? You've got to see which way my directions go, this way to Broadway. And the pump house, our little pump house there, uh, the lady that painted the horses on the bowling alley, ask if she could paint our pump house. And I think she's done, but it's adorable. And so it looks like farm animals coming through the brick. So there's a llama and a goat.
Is it done now?
I think it's done.
Oh, I only saw it like early stages.
Yeah, it's real, it's real cute. So drive that, that direction and we'll have to do something nice for Cheryl. And then, um, the PD, I got a text from the chief, because I'd asked him to have somebody here attending our meetings. And they're out on, on a rather serious emergency tonight. So that's why they weren't here. Questions?
You were on the wall of the theater.
So Rob's kind of had a hard time coming up with a con, engineering contractor. So that's still, I, I didn't even go in there after all the rain we had this week. I was just terrified of what we're going to find in there. So.
Um, was it worse?
We had, I am showing it again on Monday. Another interested party has come forth and said that they would like to take a look in spite of the things I told them. So you know, it, it, I, I think it's going to have a second life, but I just don't know how we can get the building there to um, make it safe and sanitary.
Do you think, do you think about Sky High and like Stampede and the concert? Do you think having the carnival and this concert kind of affected that too? Cause I know, like, I talked to a bunch of people and they were like, oh, we didn't know that. You know, from out of town, they're like, we didn't know that they changed the dates and, you know, so like a lot of people, you know, couldn't make it.
I think that probably took people by surprise, the change of dates, even though they, you know, it seemed like right after Stampede in twenty twenty-three, they announced their dates were going to be earlier. They're trying to, to find their way and to find that right niche. And they were hoping to, they were hoping to be able to recruit or bring in more cowboys as they're on their way to Cheyenne. But in reality, that didn't quite work out that way, because a lot of them went to Gunnison, which was the same weekend as ours. And Gunnison paid bigger purses. So they need to up the ante on their cash rewards and before people are going to stop. If you want, if you want to win, and you're going to win, you want to win more than less, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Council, maybe city commissioner and council reports. Counselor Howard? I think so. Had a nice, uh, with a nice name, Charlie. Listen to his issues and he has, sorry, he left already. You know, he's certainly about, he's not a checking to closing, but he is where you want the skate park, his car's going to street by the road. What if I was going to show up, who can hook up to? Kind of mature issues to your kind of what exactly what he's after. Be supportive of the idea, but, you know.
That's what I got off, when I talked to him at your last meeting too, is he's in favor, he just wants a safe crossing through kids. And make sure that emergency services can do what they need to do.
That's it. Thank you, Brad. Jason? Victor?
Uh, I'm glad that we have a moment in our meetings for those people who have comments and want to speak their mind.
So, uh, harvest is coming upon us. Pay attention to your surroundings, watch for traffic. For everybody in the community. Uh, once again, see something, say something. Cause we're still out there roaming around. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting until September fifth at six PM. Here at Council Chambers, Monty Strong. Right, Monty, it was the fifth, right?
Yes, yes.
Where it's a fifth now. So it's a Sunday, whatever. We'll have church. Right after.